All right, we are ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. This is the City Council's regular meeting agenda. I'm calling it to order and giving notice to members of the City Council and to the general public that at this meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call? Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan? Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Present.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence? Okay. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous people. We honor them, their legacy, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, first item up is approval of minutes from previous meetings, and I will take a motion to approve unless someone wants to provide a correction or has a question about any of them.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Yes.
Since I wasn't present for most of these, do I just abstain?
No, you can still vote. That's fine.
I read them, so thank you.
All those on paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, open call to the public. This is where the public can address council about any item that is not on the public agenda. You need to fill out a card in the back. You have three minutes, and because whatever you're going to bring up is not on the agenda, we can't ask any questions or answer any questions. First up, we have Brendan Traxel. And did I pronounce that correctly?
That's great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Brendan Traxel, and I have lived in Flagstaff for about five years. Today, I come to you with a deep concern regarding the Flock camera systems that have been installed throughout Flagstaff. For those of you who don't know, Flock cameras continuously scan, track, and store license plate information, along with distinguishing features such as vehicle color, stickers, accessories, and damage for every single car that comes into their view. Not just cars included in warrants, amber alerts were reported as stolen. It's universal. No crime accusation or suspicion is needed, and with multiple cameras installed across the city, this means that Flagstaff is conducting mass surveillance, tracking residents' movements without their consent. I can say affirmatively that my car was tracked driving to this meeting today, and it's likely the same for almost everyone here. Unlike traditional automatic license plate recognition, ALPR cameras that scan and then delete non-matching data, Flock cameras store everything, creating a surveillance record in the cloud of all vehicles regardless of any criminal connection. With Flock cameras, the city doesn't even own the cameras or the footage they produce. It's a subscription model. Instead, a private company controls it, building a nationwide database tracking the movements of millions of people. Through contracts with over 5,000 cities, Flock Safety is storing this data without regulation, oversight, or public consent. If the city or the police department thinks that our data is protected based on the company's claims, I'd encourage them to read the only line that matters from their privacy policy, and that is, I quote, "Flock is free to revise this privacy notice at any time," end quote. This AI-driven database can be accessed not just by law enforcement, but potentially by corporations, federal agencies, or even foreign entities, because there are absolutely no legal restrictions in place for its use. This system is ripe for abuse. In fact, this last August, the police chief of Sedgwick, Kansas admitted to you misusing the system to stalk his ex-girlfriend 228 times. The people of Flagstaff should not be unknowingly monitored, tracked, and stored in a private database. With no oversight, no real safeguards, and a proven risk of abuse, this system has no place in our city. The council must act now. Cancel the contract and end the mass surveillance of your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Tia Hatton, Tenney, and Craig Zanetto.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Pardon the crack in my voice. My name is Craig Zanetto, the City of Economic Development Administrator, and here with me is Tia Hatton Tenney, Sustainability Coordinator. We're here to announce the Innovate Green Business Pitch Competition and encourage applications from local residents and business owners.
Now in its fifth year, this initiative invites Flagstaff entrepreneurs to showcase groundbreaking ideas that promote environmental sustainability. Participants can win up to $30,000 in cash awards for their innovative project. This partnership between the city's economic development and sustainability teams underscores Flagstaff's commitment to creative climate action and business incubation, as this challenge seeks product or service ideas in the following categories: converting waste into marketable materials, removing or reducing carbon dioxide, or conserving water. Applications are open to residents and businesses within Flagstaff city limits only. Applications must be submitted online by April 7th, 2025, and then eligible applicants will take part in a pitch competition on April 11th and 12th in Flagstaff.
One of last year's awardees includes Flow Smart Vans. Some council members may remember hearing about the Smart Vans from Dr. Alexander Shenkin in October. Flow is revolutionizing residential and commercial climate control with its innovative, cost-effective Smart Van system. This system combines temperature sensors with AI-driven vans to optimize indoor temperatures by harnessing outdoor air at the most efficient times, minimizing energy consumption, and reducing utility costs. The Smart Fan will be installed in select homes built during the upcoming Habitat for Humanity Northern Arizona's construction sprints in the Timber Sky neighborhood. We will be forwarding the webpage link and event information for this event to both Mayor and council members to share with the broader Flagstaff community. Those that are listening in online can learn more and apply at chooseflagstaff.com/innovativewaste. Thank you for your time, and we would also like to thank Vice Mayor Sweet for volunteering to be a mentor and a judge during this competition, and you are all more than welcome to join us on April 11th and 12th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Maring and Tiffany Larrano.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Colleen Maring. I'm the Chief People Officer and General Counsel at Northern Arizona Healthcare. And while we still do not have an update for you yet on the location of our new hospital, we do have some really exciting news to share about how we're going to improve patient care in the meantime at FMC. And I brought the very best person to tell you about that. Tiffany Larrano is our Chief Nursing Officer and has served Flagstaff as a nurse for over 25 years, 18 of those in our emergency department here at FMC as a nurse, and then our director.
Thank you, Colleen, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us this time. This month, we're going to start a project to renovate our Flagstaff Emergency Department to make it more efficient and comfortable. You see, we have a great challenge that we can never close the doors to our emergency department. As the only Level 1 trauma center in the region, we don't have another hospital we could send folks to when we get full. Our adult inpatient beds are often at capacity inside FMC, which means someone who comes into the emergency department who needs to be admitted for care will end up waiting in the emergency department for an inpatient bed. That also means that other patients that come in for care, for the emergency department care, end up waiting until those people are upstairs in their inpatient space. There are some, these are some of the very significant reasons we're planning to build a new hospital in the Flagstaff area with adequate space and a layout to serve the entire region. But as you know, we're still searching for land to do it right. In the meantime, we're doing what we can to improve the space we have. We'll be creating an area in the emergency department for those who come in with non-life-threatening healthcare needs, which will enable us to care for those quickly and those with trauma to care for those quickly. It's called a split-flow model. We'll also be relocating the emergency behavioral health area for a more seamless service to ensure all patients receive the most appropriate care for their needs. As we make those changes inside our limited square footage, we'll be refreshing the department with paint, energy-efficient lighting, and new flooring to make the space feel better, too. We know that the community is frustrated with wait times, and we wanted to be sure that we were in front of you all to provide you with this plan so that you could help answer questions as they come your way and so that we could provide the why behind what we're doing and to better serve our community. Thank you for your time today.
All right, we have council liaison reports, and I will start with Councilmember Spence.
No report at this time.
Councilmember House?
Nothing for me at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. There's a Mountain Line Board Meeting tomorrow, 10 to 12, out at the Caspar location, and a Water Commission Meeting Thursday, 4 to 6, here in council chambers. And I'll be attending a NAMWA TAC meeting this Friday. And a quick update on BPAC, there's a utility cabinet ribbon cutting next Tuesday, 11:00 a.m. at Sonawa Middle School to celebrate the addition of the Midnight Ravens Utility Cabinet Art Wrap and the new public art partnership between Arizona Public Service and the City of Flagstaff. So that's pretty exciting. Hope to see some of you there. Thanks.
Councilmember Aslan?
Nothing this week.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so much to discuss at the Parks and Recreation Meeting that was held yesterday, so I will try to keep this one brief. I'm super excited to announce that the Public and Recs Committee is partnering with the BPAC, Beautification and Public Art Commission, on a public art installation within the Smoke Rise Community Park. The long and short of it is a concerned citizen applied for a Beautification in Action grant, which any citizen can apply for, to help beautify Smoke Rise Park with a mural painted on an existing ballcourt surface that is, according to some, a little underutilized. So we're hoping to bring attraction by adding this feature. I was happy to see the Parks and Rec voted unanimously to forward this project to final approval to Vice Mayor Sweet's committee, the BPAC. This will be a fun project with tremendous community collaboration efforts on behalf of the artists, and she will be using community members, all of you are welcome to join, to paint the project. Park staff will be adding some, oh, also, park staff will be adding some maintenance features to some of the parks' facilities currently. And lastly, there was an extensive presentation and discussion on Highland Mesa Park. This is arguably the first park that has been built in a little, in a little while, and it's located behind, or just west of, the Staples Shopping Center. The City of Flagstaff is in the visioning phase of development with a community-first mindset, and what that means is the community themselves are the ones that are designing this park through community participation and open meetings. I highly recommend the community and the council also to watch this meeting on YouTube. Go to the City of Flagstaff's YouTube channel where you can see all the committee meetings and all the council meetings and all that good stuff, because the nuances and the level of, I guess, the level of what staff took in from the community is amazing. We're talking about like a two-mile Buffalo Park-style walk trail with like a biking trail next to it, potentially like a ninja course. So that way, all ages will be facilitated here from like, you know, adolescent to 18 years old and beyond. This is a really exciting park. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I attended earlier this week the Airport Commission Meeting, and can I say that the commissioners there are very impressive with their resumes and who they are and their background. It's my first meeting with them. Just a couple of updates. Staff updated us on the snow removal equipment building that's been talked about for a couple of years. It's still in design. FAA came back with some comments, so the Design Committee is working on addressing those issues. We will start airfield maintenance project in May or June, depending on, obviously, the weather. It has to be warm enough to be able to lay new pavement down. And then, our Airport Communications Manager Claire Harper presented an updated digital ad campaign that is very, very good. I was really excited about that. And then, our Airport Director Brian Gahl presented an update on our Terminal Concession Project, which will provide airport micro-market as well as a coffee vending machine. I was really excited about this. I'll share on the to-and-from trip that I just got back from Washington, D.C. And even the larger airports are adding these vending machines for us early morning or late evening travelers, a lot of good, delicious food. And then, lastly, Wiseman Aviation, who is our FBO, presented a summary of the airport's Wings Pilot Proficiency Program that they hosted not too long ago. Secondly, I also, on last Thursday, attended our Audit Commission Meeting. It's usually once a year. And exciting that, and we're very proud of this, and we all should be, that once again, we received an unmodified opinion. That may not sound like much, but that means that's the highest kind of rating they can give the city. We are considered a low-risk municipality because of how clean and well-reported our financial reports are. Our auditing, our CPA firm stated they spend 500 to 600 hours preparing the reports. This last year, they did a report on her funds, ADQ, the landfill, the airport had a total of $31.2 million in federal funds were audited. We're only required to have 20% of our funds audited, but we did 38% and got a smashing report, so very proud of that. And I know we're going to have a little presentation in a few minutes. We have a commissioner seat opening up, and so I encourage anyone with a financial background or maybe works for a CPA firm to maybe join. It is very informative and makes you feel good about what we're doing with all our public funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Nothing from me today. So we will move down to liquor license public hearings. I am going to open the public hearing, and then we'll have a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Georgiana Stasky, Deputy City Clerk. Before you today is a liquor license application for a new application of a Series 18 craft distillery license for Wylem, located at 1605 North Main Street. The agent on the application is Chad Michael Cook, with owners Chad Michael Cook, Robert Belnap Markey, and Zachary James Walker Elman handling the day-to-day operations. The Police Department and Community Development have conducted their respective investigations. The reports are included in the agenda packet, and representatives from the divisions are here to answer any questions you may have. A representative from the business has also been invited to attend the hearing today.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? And no public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will move to forward the application to the state with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we are moving down to consent agenda. Number eight, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. Council, are there any, well, and just to say to the public, that items on the consent agenda are usually approved with one motion, and unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by council are budgeted items. So council, is there any item on here that anyone would like to pull for further discussion? All right, then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda, items A through H, as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We're down to routine items. Number nine, 9A, consideration and approval
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Brandy Suda, serving as the city's Finance Director. I'm here before you for the approval of the fiscal year 2023, 24 financial statements and single audit. I'm accompanied today by one of our auditors, Michael Lizan, from Heidnfeld Meach. Per state statute, the certified public accountant who performs the audits must present the audit results to council for approval. Our Audit Committee did meet on March 14th and unanimously approved the financial statements and single audit. And before I turn the presentation over to the auditors, I would first like to thank the finance team and our budget team for all of their hard work preparing for the audit, the financial statements, and single audit. Secondly, I would like to take a few minutes to recognize one of our Audit Committee members. Last week was his last meeting. As an Audit Committee member, Dave Cosper. He has been an Audit Committee So Dave, in recognition of Dave Cosper's service with the City of Flagstaff as a member of our Audit Committee for more than 25 years, the City of Flagstaff thanks you for the time and energy you have spent as a member of the Audit Committee. We appreciate the hard work and dedication you have so graciously rendered on behalf of our community. Your service has been invaluable in guiding the direction of our community. Flagstaff continues to be a wonderful place to live because of caring and involves citizens like you. On behalf of the City of Flagstaff, we wish to express our sincere thanks for the time and energy you have devoted to improving our community. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And with that, I'll turn it over to the auditors.
Okay. Hard to follow up that one. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, for having me here today. My name is Michael Lizan. I'm the part of Heidnfeld Meach. We are the independent auditors hired by the city to perform a multitude of audits, and I won't go through all of them in detail today. We already did that at the Audit Committee Meeting, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them throughout the presentation. Okay. So, as Brandy mentioned, the reason why we're undergoing this process is, one, it's required by city charter, state law, to undergo an audit every year. You're also required, under federal law, to undergo what's called the single audit every year, because you receive and expend more than $750,000 in federal awards. And as Councilmember Matthews mentioned, it's over $30 million, $30 million, actually. In addition to why I'm here today is because, again, state law requires that you have the auditor actually present either in person or on Zoom to present the audit report to council within 90 days of the completion, and we are within the 90 days. And again, the ACFER, that is the main comprehensive financial report. The larger one is posted online. The city received the Government Finance Officers Association Award for the 2023 audit, and we fully expect the city will receive the award again for the 2024 audit. I do want to say a special thank you to, Brandy mentioned it, but I do want to say a special thank you to Brandy Suda, Heidi Dairy Berry, Martin Donahoe, the entire finance team, and all the departments we work with, grants, housing, information technology, procurement, et cetera. Their work, we are here, as was mentioned, 500, 600 hours out of the year, three weeks on-site, multiple auditors, and we're interrupting their daily jobs to have them help us with finalizing the audit. And out of the entire 190, almost 200-page book of what the comprehensive financial report is, only three pages is what we're responsible for, and everything else is the city staff. So we appreciate their hard work. And so what is the importance of the audit? We're verifying management representations regarding the finances, demonstrating stewardship and accountability to citizens, council, grantors... and accountability to citizens, council, grantors. All this reporting goes to federal and state agencies. Bondholders are obviously very interested in how the city's finances are doing, reviewing compliance with laws and regulations. And ultimately, you as the governing body must, you know, you're ensuring that the that management is fulfilling its responsibility as well. And so what is the audit process? We'll just kind of spend a few minutes on this. As you can see, it's basically a year-round process. We are almost done with the last report that's required by March 31st. But as you can see, typically, the audit process begins in May of each year. And so this year began in May of 2024. We had site visits in June, October, and November. Our June visit is typically more transactional-type test work, compliance work. The October, November visits are more focused on substantive test work verifying the numbers, capital assets, pensions, debt, cash, all those various larger numbers. We're typically onsite. Our team is here based in Flagstaff, and so we enjoy coming to downtown Flagstaff and working, but we also do a lot of work online, utilizing secure portals as well to upload documents, verifying that the information we transfer back and forth is all secure. And then the deadline for the annual comprehensive financial report is actually December 31st, but we issued both that report and the single audit report on December 19th. And so some of the audit methodology, obviously, a lot of the information comes from the city, including the final financial numbers. We then identify as the auditors what areas we think require more of our attention, and we base our procedures to address those risks. We evaluate internal controls. We do not give an opinion on internal controls, but we do review them. And then I talked about some of the substantive test work we perform, also performing various analytical test work. Based on the schedule of expenditures, the federal awards we obtain from the city, we have to assess which federal programs we have to test every fiscal year. And so that's a really big part of ensuring that the numbers we're given by the city are accurate. And then based on what we're given, we're required to cycle through various federal programs. And I'll talk a little bit more about which federal programs we looked at in a minute. Looking at compliance requirements set forth by the federal government. The federal government tells us what we have to test regarding federal programs, performing tests of controls, and then also tests of compliance as well. And so what are all the reports we issue? Councilmember Matthews kind of talked a little bit about it. The biggest one is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, single audit, highway user funds, the Expenditure Limitation Report, the Landfill Report, the HUD, FDS, and REAC Report. That is currently in progress, but we, and it's due by March 31st, but we anticipate no issues with finalizing it before then. And the final one is the Passenger Facility Charge Program related to the airport. And like I said, the due dates, ACFER is due by the 31st of each year, and the other reports are typically due by March 31st. Okay. So ta-da. The big news is, again, you received an unmodified opinion, the highest opinion we can give regarding your financial audit. It's not a statement of perfection, but we can say that the financial statements are free from materially free from misstatement due to error or fraud. We always like to throw this little catch-in, is that the purpose of a financial audit is not to catch fraud, but rather to review material amounts on the financial statements and for compliance with state or federal requirements. We're not testing every transaction. That would be kind of impossible to do an audit that way. But we are looking at, we do a sample that we think represents the activity of the city. We noted no internal control deficiencies. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we uncovered, and if we had those, we would be required to disclose them. And again, we talked about the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That will be, has already been sent in for the award application, and we anticipate that the 24 audit will receive that award as well. Okay, so for single audit purposes, this, again, you receive what's an unmodified opinion, and this is unmodified opinion on compliance with federal requirements. Talked about how the federal government tells us as auditors what we have to test, what we have to look at for compliance purposes. And so for fiscal '24, we tested the Public Housing Operating Fund, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, and the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Cluster. That's the WIFA funds that the that the city receives. And so the total expenditures were $31.2 million, and our audit coverage was about 38%. And as was mentioned, you do qualify as a low-risk audit based on your previous audits having clean opinions and no findings. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Michael. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Meta-Mayor. I am happy with the report. I read through it, and I actually think I might have read a little bit too much. If this is, if this is going into a place that we don't need to be for this conversation, then I can take the questions offline for sure. So noting that there was two asset classes in the general fund that did not meet the budget this past fiscal year were the courthouse collections and the charge of service. I had two questions. When we talk about the court collections not receiving enough revenue, does that mean that less citizens did things bad enough to get in trouble with the courts? Because if that's the case, then I'm all about it. But if it's something else, I was just wondering if you could speak to that. And then the second question is just, what is charge of services?
So court collections, what we have seen is we've seen a decline in court fines and over the past couple of years. And so some changes that have been made kind of at the state level. So I can't really say exactly which fines or forfeitures it relates to, but we have seen a decline, and we've been adjusting our budget accordingly. For, I'd have to get you more, look into that more to get some more additional information, if you'd like that, Councilmember, related to the charges for services. So this is our user fees. So it varies. It can be community development, parks and rec, police, fire. So it's across all departments within the general fund. And so, you know, these could be Aquaplex memberships, J. Lively, you know, rentals and things like that. That helps.
Yeah, thank you very much. Being new, I have some questions that might be a little perfunctory for some, but for me, they're really important. So that with, you know, as we look at life and the stock market and things like that, every part of what we do works and runs in retracements. That was the retracement part of it. I would love to talk about the run now. And I wanted to give a huge shout-out to Team Flagstaff, Management Services, and everybody that works here at the city for kind of meeting and actually exceeding some of the budgetary projections. And I could go on and on about that, but I just wanted to say thank you to the team for making, making our goals realistic and then pushing to, to make, to do better than our goals. So thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to finish up by thanking Team Flagstaff, all the departments who have to report in and submit the reports. Michael Yu and James Schenkl, who is our Audit Manager, direct report. You guys and your team put in a lot of work, and I know we're not your only client, so just real big kudos to everyone who contributed to it. And this does impact everything that we do, to have a clean audit, a high rating. It impacts our funding from federal and state as well as bonds and stuff, so it is a big deal. And I just want to highlight that and say thank you so much.
All right. Any other questions, counsel?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, yes, of course.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the fiscal year in 2023 to 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and the FY 2324 Single Audit Report.
I'll second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well done, all. Moving down to item 9B, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-10 and Ordinance 2025-04.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel. Ed Schenk, Stormwater Section Director. This is the second read of this resolution and ordinance for the revision of the Stormwater Management Design Manual. So we do not have a presentation today, but if you have any questions before you make a decision, we are here, both myself and Doug Slover, who is the Senior Project Manager on this project. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-10.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, City Clerk?
Mayor, I'll actually read on the next action.
Sorry about that.
I move that we read Ordinance Number 2025-04 by title only for the final time.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 12 Flood Plains by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2025 Stormwater Management Design Manual, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
And can I get a motion to adopt?
So I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving down to C, consideration and approval of contract.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Item of the night, in my opinion. The audit was cool. This is cooler. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Scott Overton, Public Works Director. We are here with kind of an exciting item, and it's one of those career milestone items for council members and for staff members. We have been working on a project titled the Montavo STEM Education Community Center for quite some time. Many of you have heard of this project in the past. For my newest members, I know you're aware of it clearly. Councilmember Garcia, you had a lot of involvement with some of these discussions in your involvement with the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association. And of course, Councilmember Spence, I know you have been tracking this project and seen it, but we will go through a little bit of a history lesson, just so you understand how we got to this point and why it's such a milestone as we are now ready to deliver this exciting project. Mr. Clifton, if you wanted to take a moment to say something about it or move to a point in the presentation, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I also know you've had strong interest in this project.
Thank you, Scott. I'm interested in hearing the presentation. I'll just note, for the council and for the community, this has been a very organic project from the start. It's a project that came up with neighborhood support, a lot of support from community members, and certainly from staff. We love to see projects like this. It's born from the community and for the community, and will be delivered soon, so take it away, Scott. Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate those brief and on-the-spot comments. With me tonight, I also have a number of staff members that will support this item and answer any questions that you might have. Jenna Weldon from our BPAC representation, and some of our art pieces within the mosaic. And the elements of the project are with us. Nicole, there she is, Nicole Antonopoulos from Sustainability is with us this evening. I have Jen Brown from Facilities, Rebecca Sayers from Parks and Recreation, Open Space and Events. There's a lot of little nuances to this project, so they'll help me fill in the blanks as needed, or if you have any specific questions for those folks. And then I also have some guests with us from Love &amp; Contracting. They will be my recommended award for this evening, and I'd like to make sure we introduce those folks, and we'll give them a moment to say hello throughout as well. This has been a good project. Here we go. We're all familiar with former fire station number two in the Sunnyside Neighborhood. I wanted to take these images and make them look like 1973, and the fogginess of my lens did just that. This station served its purposes, was closed over 10 years ago when we did the fire station relocation program. It has since not had a lot of high and good use. It is adjacent to the Montavo Little League Field in the South Sunnyside Neighborhood area. It is currently an aborted upstate and not in the best of conditions. So we clearly, as a city, take responsibility for keeping it safe, but we also would like to repurpose this property and make it to a higher and better use. And this is a great picture of kind of the why we got to this conversation. I built a simple timeline to go back and explain how we got to tonight. You'll see tonight's action is in the center of this graph. This project really began in earnest in fall of 2022, two councils ago, actually, where we were asked to take a look at the property, kind of make some assessments and figure out what might be a good project and a good fit. We had done some basic analysis, some environmental work. We had done some sustainability analysis. We reported back to council, and at that time, they had an opportunity to utilize some Recovery Act funds, and they were dedicated towards this education center, and that was in the fiscal year 2324. Once we had some funding in place, it became real. We were able to secure a design firm to help us with some conceptual ideas and start to put on paper what we thought might be a good starting point and give us some ability to showcase what it could look like to the neighborhood. Again, not formal design, but at least concepts. We also had to start our process internal to the city of site plan review, so submitting to community development, just to make certain that we would meet not only our obligations of this property, but we understood utilities and intersection improvements, the things that we would need to support this center. So we completed that in the summer of 2024, that concept process, and then the site plan development process. Once we had that, we were able to go to the community and ask for a statement of qualifications. This procurement process handled through our Management Services Group, and Emily Markell's expertise allowed us to go solicit contractors. Our top-scoring contractor for this design build, RSOQ, was indeed Love &amp; Contracting. After that competitive process was completed, we started to move towards the development of a design-build-service agreement. That is actually the action you're taking this evening. So the way I like to think of the design-build-services agreement is you are now taking the summation of the entire procurement process. We're putting it into a master agreement. We're going to award the work to this contractor, and now we will give them notice to proceed. Following this evening, you will see a series of guaranteed maximum price documents or amendments to the master agreement. Those amendments will come in time. Our first is actually coming in two weeks, on April 1st, no fools. And we will be here to talk about GMP 1, which will be really the design and the full construction set of plans in two weeks. My hope and goal will be to set some benchmarks and milestones, as I will still take lead and point on this from the city's perspective. How do we develop a team that can support the project, push hard to get through community process, get the input we need, get final construction documents in place? I will put some artificial timelines out there, and they're kind of big picture for a reason at this point. But we will shoot for late '25 fall for the final plan set to be done. So then we'd be willing and ready to go to get building permits, kind of has all the design done, everything's ready to go. But that does take some time. We'll have to get through some design process and some inputs, but if we could get that done by late '25, that's really a good place for us with the construction seasons. Come that same timeframe, I would start to look at GMP 2. We'll work with our contractor to determine what work can we complete, maybe in late fall or in the early winter months, if we have weather cooperation. Maybe it's demolition and some environmental remediation, might be some site improvements if the weather holds. And then beyond that line, which I did not put on your timeline, will be obviously vertical construction, procurement of the items, long lead items. So we might see up to maybe four or even five GMPs with this project, but it is very sequential. First one is in two weeks. Now, I think this is a really important slide, and I enjoyed putting this one together because I think first and foremost, when we started talking about this project even three or four years ago, one of the most and important items for us to remember was neighborhood fit and the community. We wanted to make certain that we thought about was neighborhood fit and the community. We wanted to make certain that we thought about something that made good sense, that was respectful of the neighborhood, respectful of some of the asks and of the adjoining uses. So it's the center of this graphic for good reason. That is our primary objective. And then around this center, it's not really a hexagon, but we'll call it a geometric shape, you'll see a series of six-sided shapes, and they each represent one of the values we were trying to preserve. So on the very top, we have the STEAM education providers. We did solicit some input from community providers. I use the word STEAM here because, as we all know, there are really two ways to say this. It's the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and then if you add the A, you get more of the arts within the acronym. We had some federal monies, of course, that were using the STEAM term early in its application, and we want to make sure we don't confuse that, so we don't lose funding, we don't jeopardize that. But I think in its use, we're going to see STEAM is probably where you're headed, but not so much if the funding is at source. We knew the mosaic incorporation was really important. It's a fairly new mosaic. We have done some analysis. We may have to do some rework on that. I will tell you as a heads-up, we are working closely. We will make contact with the artist in a formal fashion as we move into design, but we will likely have to rebuild that wall. It will make better sense. It will make good use of financial resources. It'll make a better mosaic long term. The new opportunity we're having is we may have a double-sided mosaic. We might be able to do some work on the outside like it is today, and then maybe have a STEM or a STEAM-focused mural on the inside or a mosaic as well. So kind of fun there, but that was an important element we'll preserve. Recreation restrooms. We know we need formal restroom facilities for the Little League Field next door. They were housed in the back of the old fire station, so we have incorporated two restroom buildings as part of this project that will support the Little League use. Site access, bicycle and walking in particular. It's a neighborhood center. You know, do we have bike racks? Do we have walkability? Did we fix the curbs? Did we get good kid access to the facility was top of mind. I think we've accomplished that at this location. Parking logistics. We don't have a lot of kids driving probably that might use this center, but we need parent drop-off. We need good use of space, and we want to make sure we're at least meeting our code obligations. And then certainly not least or last, sustainability was top of mind. We want to have a good building that will last for fifty to a hundred years from a city's perspective, but we also want to meet all the intents of your resolutions and your plans. So all-electric building. Nicole's done a great job providing great inputs, working with our initial concepts to try to make sure we incorporated all this into our build project. Specific-wise, we don't have a lot of it nailed down. It'll come in design, but we have definitely put enough budget in there to be committed to all of those elements of sustainability. Tonight's recommendation, award to Lovin' Contracting, and I think this is a great time if they don't mind making their way towards the front. We do have a total build cost of three point one million. In your staff summary, you'll see the breakout of funding sources. We did have to add some additional resources to complete the project in its conceptual budgets. We're asking them to deliver a STEM community education center, and again, I mentioned GMP one will come to you on April first. But I'm going to turn it over to John Hanson and to Ryan and Carla, and just let them introduce yourself. If you have a specific question for them, we can either take it now or during questions, but floor is yours, John.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us tonight and giving us the opportunity to say hi and express our gratitude and appreciation for being considered, consideration, part of this project. And we are honored to receive the recommendation to be a design builder moving forward. This is going to be a high-impact redevelopment and infrastructure project, and we're just excited to hopefully be a part of it moving forward. So thank you for that.
I just want to thank everyone. I'm Ryan Stevens, the Director of Preconstruction at Lovin' Contracting. I've been working diligently with Scott and the group to try to get this to where we are today, and we just appreciate the opportunity. So thank you.
My name is Carla McCorden. I'm the Director of Marketing and Business Development for Lovin' Contracting, and I just, I'm so excited to bring this to the East Side. It's such a cool project. So thank you, guys, for letting us participate, if we do get the win.
Thank you for being here this evening. I think it's important, and again, if we have questions for the Lovin' team, they'll be here. I mentioned earlier, three GMPs, maybe four. First one will be fire station, excuse me, design will be first one, and then we'll likely have fire station demolition and utility work, then maybe long-lead items, things we have to get going on for construction, site work, and then, of course, the building itself, the vertical construction. A really important element, and I believe Dr. Christie is likely online watching us from Tinkertopia, she is one of our community providers, but she has strong interest in this project, and a question that always comes up is who will be in the house, the building itself, to provide the services? I don't have that answer yet. It will be a separate solicitation. I will recommend to you all that we get down the road of building a little bit further. When we get a little bit closer towards those timelines, we'll work with management services and procurement to start building a solicitation that would go out and solicit to the community a service provider that would actually provide the services at the center. That does come. It's a separate procurement. Tonight's action really delivers the building, but it is important to know that that solicitation is separate. And then this is always a fun picture. We've used it now for a couple of years. This was the conceptual renderings showing the original mosaic in place. Again, don't get hung up on every detail. Some of this has changed during our design budgeting process, but you can see the two small outbuildings to the left of this image. Those are those restroom facilities for the ball field. They're actually not attached to the primary structure. It's about a three thousand square foot education center. In concept, couple offices, some large maker spaces with lots of flexibility. All this will be vetted with the neighborhood, with the community through some charrettes and some design process, and as we work with our new design firm and Lovin', we will make certain that it meets all of our objectives and goals. But this was really what we were shooting for, and I'm excited for it. I think it'll fit the neighborhood well. Mayor may not look exactly like this, but I do think this is where we're headed, and this is what we're trying to achieve. So pretty exciting image. With that, happy to answer any questions, have any formal discussion, or you can jump right to action. Your pleasure, Council. We appreciate it, Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Scott, for the presentation, and as a community member in two thousand twenty-two, working with the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association, thank you for being so connected to the community and always answering the call, always showing up at the meetings and kind of walking us through all the steps. As Scott mentioned, in two thousand twenty-two, the staff got heavily involved with this, but I want to take the story back to a little bit further from my recollection, two thousand nineteen-ish, maybe a little earlier than that. It could have been two thousand eighteen. I don't necessarily remember, but at the time, former Mayor Coral Evans and Vice Mayor Jamie Whelan started the, I guess, the spitballing of this idea, and from what I understand. And I'm going to thank City Manager Clifton for taking that idea off the shelf when the money was there and appropriate to move forward on this issue. And it's going to be an invigorating space for the community, the Sunnyside Neighborhood, and really, Flagstaff is extremely excited to have this opportunity to give something back to the kids, really, and to future education throughout all age groups. But again, thank you, Greg, for bringing it off the shelf and dusting it off for us and getting us to where we are now. And Mayor, when the time comes, I'd really like to make the motion on this.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott, and team for the development on this and for the updates. This is a really exciting project, and to see it moving forward at this point and have the rendering, which we know is changing, but still, that gives that vision to what the possibilities are here, I think is really exciting. Very grateful to the team from Lovin', who I know we've partnered with on other things before, and always bring a lot of that community-mindedness to their work. It's exciting to see them stepping into this as well, and I just particularly wanted to draw attention and thanks for the community-centeredness of the engagement and the ongoing process of this, making sure that the neighborhood and the community has voice in what this ultimately becomes for their neighborhood and for the community, making it a true community center and space for a neighborhood that has been asking for something like this for, as Councilmember Garcia noted, a very long time. So just very grateful to see that this is where we're at and looking forward to seeing this move forward.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to add. My colleagues said it better than I ever could, but I do want to thank you for the presentation. I did attend a few of the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association meetings regarding this project, and what a huge asset to the community. And what I want to highlight is the collaboration and working through the obstacles that you had to work through, Scott and your team. You made a huge difference for Flagstaff and for the Sunnyside Neighborhood, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a quick question. So you don't have a partner identified, of course, because that needs to be an RFP, but you are designing for the specific use, right? Because to have a science center, there are some uses that are very specific to that.
Correct. It'll be somewhat flexible, and I wouldn't rule out that maybe a third-party provider, once awarded, might request or require some additional things, whether it's furnishing or items, but we really are creating this space. And so in a perfect world, we'd probably be able to find a way to put all that on the front end, but in this case, we don't have that flexibility. So we're going to do what we can to coordinate throughout the design process and the build process, and I really do hope that we can build a building that is attractive to respondents of that second RFP, regardless of their individual mission. We want to make it to where it's an opportunity for some to look at and become good respondents and find a way to provide services to the community long term. So I think we'll find that, but it will certainly be down the road through a separate process.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize if this comment is out of order in terms of design processes, but I just want to, and I appreciate the fact that sustainability has been involved in this project from the beginning. But my question is, has there been consideration to straw bale and/or integrated concrete forms in the wall construction? I think we all appreciate Willow Bend as a beautiful building made of straw bales, very sustainable. So has a decision, let me ask the question this way. At what point in the design process is a final decision made on what you're going to build the walls out of?
It's an excellent point. I will tell you, I think we're there. I think we've made that decision, and it's not to sound like we've done it ahead of the process. Our budget guidelines and criteria have really driven us. We've evaluated four separate building processes, and I can speak to those specifically. I think Lovin' might be best to speak to those. We did land on a wood frame construction methodology. That's the only way we can make budget on this project, but we did evaluate others. We did not evaluate alternative methods as those typically, in the past, have not been lower cost, even with utility savings for structures such as this. So I think you think that stuff through a little bit, but in our analysis, we did that cost benefit over four different types of process, and we ultimately landed where we did. And it really is a financial driver, but it does not take away from us still meeting all the goals of sustainability and the energy performance. So we didn't sacrifice, but alternative building methods was ruled out as it is just so much more expensive, and we did not have that type of funding.
And does that more expensive calculation also apply to cement blocks from our local block light company that's including, that's integrating CO2 into the cement blocks?
Yes. So CMU, Concrete Masonry Unit, was also evaluated. There are a few elements within the design that I think will continue to be CMU. For example, maybe the restroom buildings. We want those to be durable. We want those to be very long-term and industrial in use, not necessarily appearance, but in use. So you'll see us incorporate likely local manufactured block in the design elements. We just aren't there with which walls, which parts, which portions, but we did not go with an entire concrete masonry building because, again, it did not prove up to be the best option.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fair.
Three thumbs up.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the design-build contract with Lovin' Contracting Incorporated for the construction of the Montavo Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics STEM Education Community Center in the amount not to exceed three million one hundred thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? This is really exciting. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. All right, so we're moving down to our regular agenda. Item ten A is approval of our materials for the Washington DC lobbying trip.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. So tonight, I will be providing information on the city's annual Washington DC lobbying trip, and I'll be asking you, as the council, to formally approve the materials that will be used to guide conversations during the trip, specifically our lobbying packet. So every year, a delegation from Flagstaff travels to Washington DC to highlight Flagstaff's needs and legislative requests to our federal delegation. The topics of discussion during the trip are largely determined by the council's legislative priorities, which you previously approved back in January, but they may also cover specific projects or grant applications or the city's congressionally-directed spending requests. So this year, topics will include those listed on the screen, including the Rieda Flag Flood Control Project, affordable housing, airport needs, the Red Gap Ranch Project, our Butler Fourth Complete Street Project, the Big Phil Lake Grant Application, and our CDS, our congressionally-directed spending request. So when the Flagstaff delegation is meeting with our senators, our House representatives, and agency officials, this is what those conversations will be about. All of these topics are detailed in the lobbying packet, which is attached to the agenda packet for this meeting. So we generally, during the DC trip, highlight our requests for congressionally-directed spending. This year will be a little bit different. We recently learned that although we did have three requests that were included in the appropriations bill by both the House and Senate, unfortunately, those requests and no requests nationwide were included in the continuing resolution that was passed last week. So Bob, our federal lobbyist, has advised that we then resubmit last year's requests for FY twenty-six. So the lobbying packet now includes those three requests that were approved for FY twenty-five for resubmission, and then it also includes the six requests that we had already identified to be submitted for FY twenty-six. So I believe City Manager Clifton had already spoken about these six requests here, and they are also listed with some more detail in the lobbying packet. Every year, the mayor attends the DC trip and is accompanied by two council members who are determined by the rotation that we keep. This year, the mayor will be accompanied by Vice Mayor Sweet and Councilmember House. They will also be joined by Deputy City Manager Joanne Keen, City Attorney Sterling Solomon, and Senior Project Manager Christine Cameron. Everything is scheduled for the first week of April, and the main days of meetings will be April first and second. As those of you who've been on this trip before know, this is a really busy trip, and the days are jam-packed with meetings. On the screen are the meetings that Bob has already arranged, but meetings are frequently added, you know, up until the time of the trip or even on the day of sometimes. So overall, the delegation will be meeting with our senators, our congresspeople, and then officials from the various government agencies that are relevant to our priorities. So with that, staff is requesting formal approval of So with that, staff is requesting formal approval of the DC lobbying packet, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for council's discussion.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? Councilmember House?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Looking forward to this trip. I may just have some tweets to my bio, if that's okay, but nothing that would prevent us from approving this tonight.
Sure. Just send them over, and I'll get them included. Thank you, Councilmember.
I made a tweet to mine, too, because it said I was still working somewhere else. All right. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the materials for the Washington DC lobbying trip.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving down to B, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-11. Hello? New guy?
Yeah, new guy. Nice. Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of council. Trevor Henry. I'm the Capitol Improvements Engineer. And before we start the presentation, I just wanted to introduce to you Ann Taylor. Ann Taylor is a senior project manager, and she is one of four new project managers that has started in the last eight months. So if you remember, about eight months ago, four months ago, we were, had five vacancies. So she is one of the four new that we've hired since then. And she'll jump into the presentation, and then at the end of the presentation, she'll have opportunities for questions. So you can ask her a little bit more about where she comes from, who she is, and if she likes her boss. Hi. Good afternoon, council, mayor, vice mayor, council. Thank you for this opportunity. Let me start my, oh, wrong one. Did they clear them out? Did they clear it? I'm sorry. Give me a second. We had it yesterday. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let me start again. Good afternoon. Like Trevor said, my name's Ann Taylor, a project manager, Capitol Improvement, and I'm here today for a brief presentation, to present a brief presentation for, this is not, I'm sorry, this is not the right one. This is not. We had my PowerPoint up here, and it looks like it might have been taken off. Yeah, it's not here. Can I take it?
Stacy, if you could, that'd be great.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You have any questions for? How do you like your boss? Which one? We had it up here yesterday. Yeah. Way to start. Sorry, guys. You guys are on a roll.
We were having some trouble with the screen earlier today. Let me try a couple options here.
I do, I do have my notes. I can, I can go over the resolution just from memory, if that's okay with you, since we don't have it. Okay, so, excuse me, the resolution. Let me start again. Thank you for having us, and I'm sorry about that. We did have it up on the desktop. I don't know what happened. So, but basically, the resolution is for, for, the city would like to apply for the Arizona Smart Fund for a city's match for the RAISE grant award for the Butler Fourth Project. Earlier this year, 2025, January, we, the RAISE grant, Butler Fourth, I'm sorry, Butler Fourth Project, Improvement Project, was awarded $19 million from the RAISE grant. Of that $19 million, the city's commitment is $10 million. And we are requesting to apply for the Arizona Smart Fund for 3.8 million, which is 20% of the RAISE grant, which is what is allowed. The Butler Fourth Project, Improvement Project, the funds that will be utilized, that's committed, is from Prop 419. And with the $19 million coming from the RAISE grant, the Arizona Smart Fund will be used towards the city's commitment. So the estimated costs, design costs, is at 3.5 million. Anticipated construction cost is 27.5 million, a total cost of 31 million. Of that amount, 19 million is coming from the RAISE grant, and the city commitment, 10 million. And if we apply and succeed and award, were awarded the Arizona Smart Fund, that would be 3.8 million that will be used towards the city's match. So the resolution is requesting that we apply for the Arizona Smart Fund and that the city will agree or accept or go into an agreement with the Arizona Board pertaining to the, for the Arizona Smart Fund. Sorry. So that's basically the resolution, is that we are asking to apply for this fund, which will go towards the Butler Fourth Project, and allow, a loud amount that we are requesting from Arizona Smart Fund is 3.8 million, which will, you know, will go into or cover or partially cover the city's commitment. So that's basically the resolution that we have.
Very well described. Every presentation from here on out will be a piece of cake. And, and do we feel confident that the RAISE grant, that we're still going to get it?
We were given an official notice that we did get the RAISE grant. I don't, official meaning email. I don't know if there's anything more than that.
And you haven't heard anything about those funds turning out to not be available?
No. We have not.
Great. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Ann, for making it through that. I know that that was very tough and appreciate you, as has been said, keeping all that information in your head and being able to do that just from, from memory is very impressive, as is the accomplishment of getting that RAISE grant and moving forward with this application as well. I think it's all a collective effort that speaks very well of your team and the work and efforts that you're putting into meeting these needs for our community. So just wanted to say thank you all for that as well.
Thank you.
Deputy City Manager Keen?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to make a comment on your last comment about the RAISE grant. We did receive notification last week from DOT that they are reviewing all RAISE grants, and our grant is one of them. Our team is, you know, working on, you know, providing any additional information, but we do feel good about our submittal that we submitted for that RAISE grant.
Thank you. That's a huge relief. Questions, comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move that we read Resolution Number 2025-11 by title only.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Another round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome. All right. We're moving down to item number C, consideration and approval of rental incentive bond program awards.
Okay. So is the presentation able to work? Okay, let me find it. Where is our housing, 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 housing? Oh, there it is. Okay. I have a PDF. Maybe that's the magic trick. I don't know. right. Well, I'm relieved. I got off easy, I guess. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jennifer Michelson. I'm the Housing Planning Manager in the Housing Section. I'm excited to be here tonight talking about awarding funding for affordable projects with our first-ever housing bond. This is round two, and I'll explain more. All right. So what we're here for tonight is I'm just, I'm requesting council's consideration and approval of two rental incentive bond program awards totaling $1,670,000 for projects that would result in 62 new affordable units. And that is as recommended by our Housing Commission. For now, I just want to reiterate, we're just speaking about the approval of the funding amounts. The actual contracts for funding will require additional council approval at a later date. So I can provide a quick overview of how we've gotten to this point. So this program funding is possible because Flagstaff voters approved Proposition 442 about two and a half years ago now, which gave the city approval to access 20 million in general obligation bond funds for affordable housing efforts. One of the spending categories identified by Prop 442 was to incentivize the private sector to incorporate affordable rental units in new development, and $5 million in bond funding was allocated toward this effort. So council approved the rental incentive bond program by resolution in November of 2023, and that policy document laid out the project eligibility guidelines and called for a competitive application process for this funding. And so the purpose of this program is to provide loans to developers who provide at least 10% affordable units in their new development. And they, oh, that's nice. Okay. And those affordable units need to serve households earning a maximum of 80% of the area median income. Whoops. And that, just for an understanding of how much money is 80% of the area median income for a household size of three in Flagstaff, which is our average household size, that is a gross annual amount of about $72,000. So, so one year ago exactly, literally, it was March 19th last year, we were here awarding the first round of rental incentive bond program awards. So last March, a total of $3.3 million was reserved for Foundation for Senior Living's two-phase low-income housing tax credit project. Some of you may remember. And that was located, or it is planned for a location on the old St. Mary's School site downtown. So loan documents, just a really super brief update on the status of that project. Loan documents have not yet been drafted for that project. They're still awaiting, they're actively pursuing, currently pursuing tax credits for the second phase of their project, and we won't know the outcome of that, that primary funding they're going after until about June of this year. So we're sitting tight on that project as well, but those, that 3.3 million is reserved for them until, until after this round of funding. So, but yeah, so that brings us to the second round of funding. Last November, the city published a notice of funding availability, or a NOFA, for the remaining 1.67 million in program funds. These, we received three applications by the closing date of January 19th of this year, and the housing staff conducted a minimum threshold review. All three applications were deemed eligible to be evaluated and were forwarded to a ranking committee for their evaluation. And members of this committee scored the applications individually and met on February 10th, just over a month ago now, okay, to discuss scores for each application, and we reached a consensus on the funding recommendations at that meeting. And then that recommendation of the ranking committee was brought forward to the Housing Commission at their February meeting a couple weeks ago, where the commission reviewed those awards and recommended council approve. So we can get into the fund details of the project here on this slide. I have a pretty comprehensive table. So, yeah, we did receive a total of three applications this round, but due to the limited funds remaining, that 1.6 million, we were only able to extend the award to the two highest-scoring applications. So both applications that are recommended for funding are approved mixed-income rental housing projects that agreed to set aside a portion or percentage of their units as affordable. I believe representatives from both of those projects are online, hopefully, and can answer questions about, if you have any specifics about those projects. But, yeah, so the highest-scoring, the highest-scoring project is called Elkwood Apartments. It's being built by Wexford Developments. This is a multifamily project located on the northeast corner of Butler and Fourth Street, up there next to Sanawa. And after various delays and cost increases over the last several years, the construction is currently underway. They did receive council-approved rezoning in November of 2020. So it's been a rezoning in November of 2020. So it's been a long road for them. They're finally constructing. And in that rezoning case, they, it was a development agreement was, development ingredient, sorry, a development agreement was included in that rezoning. And as part of that, they designated 22% of their units as affordable. That's a 10% contribution. And they agreed to serve households up to 70% of the area median income for a period of 30 years. So they did nudge that income level down a bit at that time because the max AMI is 80%. So anyway, the, this, with this funding though, we, we were pleased to see that Wexford proposed to extend the affordability period to 50 years, from 30 up to 50, which was, which would result in their loan being forgiven per the adopted rental incentive bond program. So you can see they requested $528,000 in funding, and it is recommended that they receive that amount as the highest scoring application. Moving on to the second application here, number two, was for Lake Mary Housing. Atlantic Development submitted an application for their multifamily project. It's tentatively called Lake Mary Housing. I'm sure they'll come up with a better name in the future. That's located down on Lake Mary Road, about 4621 South Lake Mary Road. And the rezoning on this project was just recently approved by Council, you may recall, last December, in December 3rd, 2024. So they're, they're making some nice progress on this. So they also had a development agreement designating 20% of their units as affordable, which was 40 affordable units in that project are going to be affordable up to 80% of the area median income for a period of 30 years. And the developer is going to continue to work toward their remaining building and engineering plan approvals before they can begin construction on their project. So they're just a little, they're, I mean, I guess relative to Elkwood, they're a lot earlier in their process. But yes, so this developer requested the full pot. They requested $1,670,000 in funding, but since they were second place, we just, we gave them the remaining funds, which was actually pretty good. They, they ended up with $1,142,000 in recommended award. I just want to provide a little bit more context with how we arrived at these funding recommendations. The NOFA identified that the highest scoring application would receive a recommendation of full funding. So whatever it was they were asking for, they would receive. And then the, any remaining funding would be awarded to the next highest scoring application. So that's what we have here. And so given those guidelines, staff recommends fully funding Elkwood and all remaining funding to go to the Lake Mary Housing project. All right. If Council approves the award amounts tonight, staff will issue notices of award to each developer. And the bond funding would be provided as, for Wexford, they would have their $528,000 50-year forgivable loan. And Atlantic would receive a loan, a 30-year loan for $1,142,000, which would be repayable after that 30-year term. So, yep. So all those documents still need to be drafted. The loan docs need to be drafted and worked on, and they would be placed on a future Council agenda for you guys to approve as a final action. So you can see, you can, the action required of you tonight is to just either approve the recommendation, modify the recommendation, or reject. And that concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions about this.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. And thanks to the team that reviewed these proposals and came up with these recommendations. I had an opportunity, I was about to say earlier this week, yesterday, to, to speak with the Jeff Kennedy Program. And this was one of the first things that he asked about was dedicating these sorts of funds for the development of 62 affordable units. And one of the things that I shared during that conversation, I, I think, I made mention of this, is that sometimes numbers like this feel small, but when we think about how big of a bucket we have to fill for our affordability here in Flagstaff, every drop in the bucket is a drop in the bucket. And it's, it's bringing that number closer to where we need it to be. So just very grateful for these sorts of programs coming forward that are helping us to meet those goals and achieve the goals of the 10-year housing plan and our overall goals as a city to increase that affordability and access to affordable housing. I, I think that's it for now. And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion after the rest of the conversation, if that's okay.
Okay. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you. My first question is, if you can remember this, how many units is the Foundation for Senior Living?
I just looked up our last year's presentation, sorry, last year's presentation was 139 units between two different phases. There is a chance that that has shifted over time as they rework their, their math on how far their money will go this year. So I, I would definitely need to recheck with them on what their final numbers are looking like right now, but.
So I brought this up last year too, and I just want to make mention of it again. On our bond pamphlet description, we were estimating, I think, 400 units. And so was there any consideration, I mean, you know, Elkwood comes out to about $24,000 per unit that we're providing and funding. Lake Mary is 28,000. The Senior Living Foundation's 23,000. If we did the math on the 5 million at 400 units, it was 12,500. So when we're scoring, and I know we get what we get, right? You know, what projects come in is what projects come in, and we want to turn those into affordable housing units. We can't just say, well, we'll wait 10 more years until somebody can produce like a Warriors project that's bringing us 221,000 units. But is there any, is that part of the scoring to say, you know, this, their ask is a percentage of, you know, what is that giving us per unit?
Yes. The, the NOFA application waits, I guess, the lower the subsidy amount, like you were saying, our target was 400 units. And if you divide $5 million by 400 units, it's about $12,000 per affordable unit. So we scored applications, so if developers were formulating their request based off of that subsidy amount per unit, they received the highest, they received a higher score. And if they were exceeding that amount based on just the reality of construction nowadays, so they, I think this last NOFA, they received zero points if they exceeded $24,000 in subsidy. So it's a sacrifice they're, they're making with the points in their, in their application.
And then to go back, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but maybe Sarah can answer me later. On the Senior Living, Foundation for Senior Living, they're waiting for tax credit loans, which I believe they're not issuing anymore for another year or so. So I'm just curious of, what if they don't get it, right?
Exactly.
There's not a lot of money out there in the tax credit world.
Right.
And the state's cutting their budget quite a bit. So do we just leave that out there forever, or?
Well, I mean, ultimately what happens with the status of that FSL, that whole downtown block is up to the developer and the property owner. And I know they're waiting those decisions all the time with each new, you know, advancement or setback, or if they get money or don't get money. But we did, as for our, the reservation of funding that we awarded them last year, that 3.3 million, it had a two-year limit where we were, we knew they were, they were just about to be applying for tax credits. That was in, it was an April 1st tax credit deadline. Every year it's the same. April 1, and by June 1, you know if you got it or not. So, so we were heading into that. We knew they were applying. They sadly did not get awarded funding last year, but our reservation permitted two rounds of funding because we, we've been here before. We know it's, it's not always a given just because you apply once. You might need to try a few times. And they've absolutely tried a few times. So, so we did build in that kind of wiggle room to give them two rounds of like 9%, Lytec funding to try to secure that funding. And then the funds would be, I guess, deobligated is a good word, if they do not receive that funding. If we hear back in June, we just had them confirm a week or two ago that they were applying this April. And if they don't get it, we'll know by June. So, and that funding would have to go back out. That's rep, or, well, it's, it's complicated because it's a two-phase project. So if they don't get this funding for phase two, they might, I don't know if they would proceed or not with the first phase. So.
Well, I, I, after all those questions, I do want to compliment Sarah and you and Justina and everybody to, turning this around, you know me by now that I don't like the speed of government. It's slow. But I'm happy to see this is, you know, round two is out there. And we are making that commitment. And as Councilmember House said, it may seem like a small number, but we have to just chip away at this. So I, I'm really thankful and, and want to congratulate you all on focusing on that and getting this second round out there and getting this bond money spent. So thank you all so much for your work.
If I could, Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, I just wanted to offer a quick point of clarification. There is tax credit funding available right now through the national program. The state housing tax credit has been faced with a lack of funding, but on the national level, that funding is available. Those applications are due on April 1. I always thought it was a joke when they said they were due on the 1st. It's not. And then we should know prior to the end of June, sometimes a little earlier. So there is money to be awarded this year.
Fingers crossed for them. That's such a great project. So I have a couple questions. Yay, Wexford for extending it to 50 years. And realizing that as, as these funds are paid back, if, if the Atlantic Group still intends to repay it 30 years, we'd be able to allocate those funds again. Can they amend, like, can they decide at some point that they do want to extend to 50 years? Or would they have just until, like, the loan documents were executed?
I, that, I mean, that would definitely have to be identified in the loan documents. I've never worked with a loan document like this. So I suppose if both parties were agreeable to expanding or extending that affordability period, we could re, you know, redo the loan contract. I think we'd need to verify that they had a way of paying, you know, like making sure all the finances worked out in that, in that way. Yeah, I don't think it's impossible. Just if it's 30 years initially, and if they can keep it affordable for longer, they might try.
Thank you. And, I mean, this is 62 families, seniors, disabled individuals in our community that will have a safe place to call home and, and stay here and continue their lives in Flagstaff. So I think that that's always something to be celebrated. All right. I don't see any other questions or comments. So Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the two rental incentive bond program awards totaling $1,670,000, resulting in a total of 62 affordable rental units as recommended by the Housing Commission.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nice work, staff. All right. Looks like we'll be talking to staff again on D, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-12.
Mayor, Members of Council, Sarah Dar, Housing Director. I'm here this evening, sorry, my brain is switching topics from the last one to this one, requesting approval of Resolution Number 202025-12, accepting a voluntary transfer of the Housing Choice voucher program from the City of Williams. I have prepared a presentation, however, it's very redundant with what we recently went over and discussed, and I would be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Council, any questions?
May I also mention, please, that Mr. William Rhodes, who is the Field Office Director from the Phoenix HUD Office, is also online if you had questions for him as well. I appreciate him taking the time to be here.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate the Housing Department for the attitude that you have brought to this question and the approach that you're using to serve all of, to take, to keep in, in your focus that we're all members of the Northern Arizona community. And I'm just impressed that you're taking this initiative, putting in the extra work, and bringing this to us this evening. It's a wonderful example of being good neighbors. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we read Resolution Number 2025-12 by title only.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council, accepting the transfer of the Williams Housing Authority Housing Choice voucher program.
And a motion to adopt?
So I'll move.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. I don't see anything for open call to the public. Is that correct? All right. So we're moving down to informational items two from Mayor, Council, and Staff and Future Agenda Item Requests. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned earlier that Councilmember House and I were in DC last week for the National League of Cities Conference. Very informative, very interactive. I think we both came out really impressed and wanting to go to the next one. Just a lot of interaction with cities and towns throughout our country, sharing the same issues that we have, housing, economic development, just immigration, a lot of different things, and a lot of great conversations. So I just wanted to share that. Tomorrow is Mountain Line's board meeting at 10 o'clock. And then at 3 o'clock tomorrow, the CJCC meeting, which is the Coconino County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, we're meeting at 3 o'clock as well. So if anybody wants to go and join us, you're welcome. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Garcia?
I just wanted to quickly thank Heidi Hansen and the Economic Development Team for providing me the opportunity to go on an airport tour, learn more about implements and all things airport this coming Thursday. I hope to see some of you all on Friday morning for breakfast, Caesar E. Chavez Community Recognition Breakfast. I'll be attending that at the American Legion. And next Tuesday, I'll have the opportunity before, prior to coming to Council, to hang out with Professor Nunez's class and speak to them about local leadership. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan?
Nothing.
I have nothing. Vice Mayor? Nothing tonight. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing tonight, and it is recognizing that tomorrow is our Vice Mayor's birthday. And because I've kind of started this tradition, I think I'm going to continue it in suggesting that maybe we sing "Happy Birthday" to her.
Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday, Vice Mayor. Also, I'll just share that I am going to be back in DC next Also, I'll just share that I am going to be back in DC next week, so I will be removing, or attending the meeting next week remotely.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two items. The first item, I request a future discussion of the three-acre Schultz parcel, which is designated for affordable housing, along with discussing all other city-owned parcels designated for affordable housing. Second item. I request a future discussion of our Council's procedure for the method and timing of the selection of our Vice Mayor.
All right, City Manager?
Nothing from me, thank you, Mayor.
All right, we're adjourned.